At this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the rolls.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet?
Here.
Chairman Granados?
Here.
Chair, let the record reflect there are seven Commissioners present for this evening's Agenda Setting Session.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly, we ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with His will and to grant the light of His Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read a statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey Statute Annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call for a moment of silence for Israel. I just want to amplify the Board's statement of solidarity with the nation of Israel following the horrific attacks brought on by the Hamas terrorist organization that unfolded over the weekend and continues today. In these challenging times, it is more critical than ever to emphasize that every individual, regardless of their background, deserves to live in peace and security. In these challenging times, it is more critical than ever to emphasize that every individual, regardless of their background, deserves to live in peace and security. The violence and turmoil have had a devastating impact on both Israel and Palestinian communities and is a stark reminder of the urgent need for a lasting solution that ensures the safety and well-being for all. We pray for a swift and equitable resolution to the conflict, one that brings enduring peace and stability to the region, aiding not only Israelis but also Palestinians. The path to peace may be arduous, but it is only a path we must tread. Let's remember that it is in unity that we find strength, and through dialogue, empathy, and understanding, we can build bridges that lead to a more harmonious world for all. Our thoughts and prayers are with the people in the region of both Israel and Palestine and all the victims and their families during this devastating time. Now I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a video presentation regarding three of our highly popular grants, the Kids' Recreation Trust Grant, the Greening Union County Grant, and the Preserve Union County Grants. You can view the monitor as each ground be on the screen to your left and to your right.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Angie Devaney from Berkeley Heights. I have the honor of being with our recreation chair at Galatelli to talk to you a little bit about our county rep grant this year.
Hi, everyone. We're down here at our park and courts here in Berkeley Heights, and we show you tonight that we have full house pickleball going on. That's eight courts getting used all the time down here. We're running up against a problem of joint failure and cracking, so we're going to come to the county and ask them if they can help us out with the Kids' Rec Trust Grant this year.
So we want to thank the county Commissioners, but we also have a little bit of a special surprise because not only Berkeley Heights residents use these courts, a whole lot more Union County residents do too.
Absolutely.
All right, shout out to Cracker.
Shout out to the brothers.
Shout out from Berkeley Heights.
Shout out from Westfield.
Shout out from Mountainside.
Thank you, Union County.
Good morning, Commissioner Leon. This is Ross Fernando from Park Recreation, the director here. Just wanted to take a moment to thank you and the other Commissioners for the recent Greening Union County Kids' Grant that we were awarded. The monies are going to be used for inspirational pieces that we are going to add to the existing park that you helped us with last year with the County Kids' Grant. So again, say thank you for your constant support year after year, and please extend our deepest appreciation to the other Commissioners. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor President. Our municipality appreciates the continued efforts of the Union County Board of Commissioners and the availability of money to create elevated recreational opportunities, improving access to resources, and enhancing the quality of life throughout our municipality. And through the Greening Union County Grant, we're going to plant 75 red maple trees, 75 green zelphula survival trees, beautifying our neighborhoods and supporting our boat green initiatives. And through the Kids' Recreation Trust Grant, the city will replace the gymnasium floors at the Springfield Center, as well as revitalize the Lynch Memorial Playground with a new spray park and a new playground area. We are grateful to partner with the County of Union on these exciting initiatives, and thank you for your support.
Hi, I'm Colleen Marr, the proud mayor in the borough of Fanwood, and I want to thank Union County Board of Commissioners for two great grant opportunities that were made possible. The first is Greening Union County. Fanwood is a tree city USA for the last 30 years. We love our trees, so we thank you so much for the grant money that will allow our shade tree commission to buy more trees. And the second grant opportunity was for the recreation, and here in Fanwood, we are undergoing a lot of improvements in Forest Road Park. We've got a beautiful master plan, and with these funds, we are actually seeing the master plan come to life with the improvements in Forest Road Park. So we can't thank you enough for the investments that the county is making in our backyard.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jen Phillips, Mayor Garland, and I just want to thank the Commissioners for the Greening Union County Grant. As you can see here on Curran Avenue in Garland, we had to remove some shade trees for some repairs of side walkways, so we're going to be using that grid to replace them. So we love trees here in Garland, so thank you again.
Hi, everyone. Linda, the mayor of Power, and I want to thank you for this great opportunity, for this grant money that we desperately need. We would like to use this money to continue improving the Mario Park, as well as the two other parks here in town. As you can see, we'd like to add some features, some picnic tables, a water fountain, possibly pavilion, a walk-in gap around the soccer field. So that this can be used for recreation soccer, as well as helping wellness. We'd also like to add irrigation systems and picnic tables and things like that to the other parks that we have in Power. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mayor Derek Armstead from the City of Linden, and we're very hopeful that we'll receive some money from the Kids' Recreational Trust Fund Grant. We have a number of parks here in Linden that could certainly use some upgrades. They are Lawson Park, Naski, Lexus Cadavir, to name a few. We certainly could use the funding to help rehabilitate these parks.
Good evening. I'm Paul Mirovali, the mayor of Riverside. I'm standing on our recently line pickleball courts, which is the fastest-growing sport in the country. We're seeking funding to have lights put on these courts. We had lights many years ago. Unfortunately, they no longer work, so we're going to put brand-new state-of-the-art lights here, which will expand the use of this pickleball facility, and we really appreciate the funding that we get from the other Commissioners.
Hi, I'm Allison Smith, Director of Recreation and Community Activities for the borough of Providence. As you probably know, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, and in Providence, it's no different. We've actually been teaching pickleball since 2015, and we currently have seven indoor classes that are very popular in full. This last month, we added lines to our outdoor tennis courts, and we now have two lined pickleball courts. But the project we're really looking forward to is our permanent outdoor pickleball courts that we plan to install in spring 2024. We've applied for our Kids' Rec Trust Fund Grant in order to help pay for those courts, and we appreciate any and all support that you can give us. Thank you for everything, Union County and the Commissioners, to the township of Providence.
Hello, my name's Anthony, Director of Recreation for the City of Rock. We're excited to see funding to replace our present park play structure, which is one of our most popular but oldest playgrounds. With this funding, we're going to replace this play structure with a new one for children of all abilities, ages 2 to 12. And here we have a photo of the rendering of the upcoming project.
Hi, this is Mayor Donald Shaw from the beautiful Borough of Roselle. I'd like to thank the Union County Commissioners and its administration for always being in support of the Borough of Roselle. This year, we're going to use the funds to unify our parks, Hyde Park in particular, and right behind me, beautiful Cheltenham Park. We're also going to plant 70 trees within the Borough of Roselle. So again, we'd like to thank you for always being in support, and together, we will always be strong. Thank you, guys.
Hello, Josh Plissardo, Mayor of Scotch Plains. I'm calling to thank Union County for giving a grant to Scotch Plains for the Kids' Recreation Trust and the Greening Grant. We're going to use that money to continue improving our parks, planting trees, and adding recreational space to the township, which we really need. So thank you, Union County. Keep it coming.
Hi, I'm Adam Lee, Director of Recreation for the Township of Springfield. On behalf of Mayor Chris Capades and the entire Township Committee, I'd like to thank the Union County Board of County Commissioners for the Union County Kids' Recreation Trust Fund Grant Award and the Greening Union County Grant Award. With the funds that we're receiving, as well as matching dollars from the Township of Springfield, we're going to be completely resurfacing Henshaw Park Tennis Court where I'm standing right now. We're also going to be painting an overlaid pickleball court for the growing popular sport of pickleball here in Springfield. The Greening Union County Grant Award will help provide hundreds of additional trees to be planted throughout the township. Once again, thank you to Union County for their financial support.
Hi, I'm Manny Figurino, Mayor of Union. As we continue to work on our infrastructure, we forge ahead with park and recreational improvement projects. I have the Superintendent of Recreation here, Bob Kapler, to talk about the new playground for Alpine Park.
Bob? Thanks, Manny. I'm excited to share that we have designed a state-of-the-art playground for the immersive features that kids of all ages will love. My favorite piece is the rope choir. It's going to be the first one to be tied in the township park.
Thanks, Bob. Now, here in Union, we'd like to thank the Union County Commissioners for including us in the 2023 Kids' Recreation Trust and the Greening Union County Grant Awards.
Hey, everybody. It's Mayor Angie Devaney from the Township of Berkeley Heights, and I'm here with all my council colleagues, coming to you from the Latell Lord House. And we have some information and maybe a little bit of a review for the diary on the Councilwoman.
Hi, so Susan Poe here, and this house was built in 1760. We're here along Horseshoe Road. It was built by Andrew Latell. It is a historic gem that needs a lot of preservation, and we have been writing grants, been fundraising to get this place back to the jewel that it once was.
Hi, Councilwoman Jean Kingsley, and I just want to let everybody know, this is our oldest historic site that we have in Berkeley Heights, and we really want to bring it back to its glory days. So we are looking for all funding and all options, because we are dedicated to getting this site back in good shape.
Councilman John Post here, and I'm on the Historic Preservation Committee, and we are going to have our second annual Latell Lord Fall Family Festival here on October 21st from 12 to 4. It's going to be a great day. From what I see, the weather's going to be 59 degrees, partly sunny, so come on out. I know it's dressed like it's summertime, but fall will be here. So come on out, and we do this so that we can bring attention to the house and bring attention so people can see it and understand what we're doing with it and raise some money for it also.
And as you can see, it needs a lot of work. We need your help. Please say yes. And you were a good Berkeley Heights Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shirley Maxwell, and on behalf of the Kennelwood Historical Society for which I serve as president, I want to thank you so much for all the support that you have provided over the past 20 years for our project to save, restore, and transform the historic Oswald J. Nitschke House into the fully accessible, year-round living history museum and cultural arts center that it is today. We especially appreciate your considering our most recent Preserve Union County Grant application for funding to authentically finish the wooden doors, door frames, window frames, and baseboard moldings in the second floor rooms, using the same faux-graining technique that was used on the first floor, a technique that was popular during the late 19th, early 20th century period of this house. An additional component of the project will be to install two beautiful period-salved stained glass windows. Such historically accurate finishes are required in the second floor rooms at this time as we prepare them for the opening of a new American immigration center. Additional replicated living spaces will be created in the center to tell the stories of generations of newcomers from many different countries and cultures beyond those represented by Oswald Nitschke and family, whose story is interpreted on the first floor, and including groups that historically have been underrepresented. Until now, the second floor rooms have been used solely for rotating exhibits and therefore did not require more than a base coat of paint on the wooden surfaces, as shown here. An example of the faux-graining technique is shown on the reverse side of the door. The proposed faux-graining project will allow all spaces in the Nitschke House to authentically and effectively accommodate living history programs that are integral to the new immigration center and that support our expanded interpretive plans for the site. Thank you so much again for your longstanding interest and generous support.
Established in 1817, Jerusalem Lodge Number 26 continues to serve God, family, country, neighbor, and self. Directed in 1929, the Plainfield Masonic Temple is in dire need of restoration. The 2023 Preserve Union County Grants will aid in the planning of the complete restoration of the interior and exterior of the four-story building, including modernizing electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, creating contemporary and accessible event spaces to serve the community.
The Merchants and Drovers Tavern Museum in Rahway dates to 1795 and is a rare example of an early American tavern and hotel structure. County funding has helped the museum association complete most of the exterior restoration, but the structure's historic wood windows are now also in need of repair. The Merchants and Drovers is now seeking a Preserve Union County Grant to move forward with a much-needed window restoration project on this National Register site. Hi, Josh Plissardo, Mayor of Scotch Plains. I'm doing this short video about Union County's Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Grant. If awarded money through this grant, Scotch Plains can continue its maintenance and restoration of the famous Shady Rest Country Club that stands beside me, as well as other historic gems in town, such as our Cannonball House and the Frazee House. Thank you for considering Scotch Plains.
Hi, I'm Rachel Goldberg, Executive Director of Liberty Hall Museum, located in Union Township, New Jersey. Built in 1772 by William Livingston, New Jersey's first elected governor and signer of the Constitution, Liberty Hall is designated as a national historic landmark. We have asked for assistance to replace a section of the roof and the butters to ensure the preservation of the structure and the collection that is housed within. This rep request will assist the museum in continuing to preserve and share the rich legacy that is the ReTalm Museum.
Thank you very much. As we saw today, based off the videos, the Preserve Union County Grant has granted Union County municipalities $300,000 in funding. The Kids' Recreation Trust Fund has granted Union County $1 million in funding, and the Greening Union County program has granted Union County municipalities $100,000 in funding. And I just want to acknowledge and thank Commissioner Loris Leon, who's the Chair of the Open Space Trust Fund Committee, and the members who are part of the Open Space Trust Fund Committee for their hard work in making sure that they were distributing these funds to these local municipalities for different projects. So thank you for that. So now, we will move to... We'll adopt the communications during tonight's regular meeting and move on to Departments. First, the Office of Union County Clerk, Deputy County Clerk Clara Fernandez. From the Office of Union County Clerk, Deputy County Clerk Clara Fernandez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Office of the County Clerk has only one item for your consideration this evening, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much. From the Office of Union County Prosecutor, First Assistant Prosecutor Jim Tansey.
Good evening, everybody. The Union County Prosecutor's Office has three items on the agenda tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Office of Union County Sheriff, Sheriff Pete Carveli.
Evening, Commissioners. Sheriff's Office has two. Where's those on the agenda? I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Just also, Sheriff, before we begin with questions, I know we took a moment of silence in what's taking place in Israel and Palestine. I know that your office and your leadership sheriff, working alongside our Commissioner Board and County Manager, just want to acknowledge your collaboration with the members of the faith-based community and making sure that the ongoing situation affecting our local residents, you know, you're providing additional guidance and safety, security measures, and helping them out. So if you can elaborate on that, please, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So everyone is aware of what's going on. So due to those events occurring in Israel, and as a proactive measure, I've coordinated with local clergy, faith leaders, as well as the police chiefs around the county. I reassigned personnel in the up-and-coming weeks to provide extra courage, extra coverage to various locations in Union County. This will include houses of worship, civic centers, and any places of mass gatherings. The men and women in Sheriff's Office will be in uniform and clearly visible. This added measure to the local municipalities is for safety, and in no way will the Sheriff's Office be a detriment. So our services will continue. It's just reassigning personnel to keep everybody safe and let your residents know, or whoever's in shouting distance that, or a phone call away. I've talked to Dennis, the Director of the Union County. I've talked to Elizabeth, and I've talked to the Prosecutor's Office. We hear what's going on. We've been updated throughout the day. We are ready. It's nothing to be scared about. Keep your eyes open and let us know what's going on, and we'll react to what is going on. But we will be out there, and we will be visible.
Thank you, Sheriff, and other members of the county law enforcement agencies who are working together in providing additional security to our local houses of worship across the County of Union. So with that said, is there any questions in reference to the two resolutions brought forward by the Sheriff? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Department of Economic Development, Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has two resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Deputy County Manager. Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management, Director Joseph Polokay.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities has nine resolutions on the agenda. Be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Oh, so Commissioner Leon?
Good evening, Director. Can you elaborate on number one a little bit?
Number one. These are the... This is the US Geological Survey, all the stream gauges, the high waters, warning us for high waters and low waters in the stream. This is the service that they provide that goes directly to the Engineering Department so they could monitor the streams during flooding and low waters and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Thank you very much, Director. Department of Finance, Director B.B. Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. The Department of Finance has 17 resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Director. Department of Human Services, Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chairmembers of the Board. The Department of Human Services has five resolutions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioner Board? Can you elaborate number two, please, Director?
Sure. This is for the Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services. This is for Trinitas to provide case management services on the road to recovery for anyone that is dealing with opioid addiction and abuse and is usage. So this is going to go... It's a great program, and it's going from the 1st of October to next year, September 30th. So it's a well... It's a program that is definitely needed in our community.
Thank you, Director. No other questions? Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Victoria Durbin-Drake.
Good evening, Chair. The Department of Parks and Recreation has six items on the agenda, and I will be happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Any question? Commissioner Mirbel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director, can you just talk, just at a high level, expand a little bit about the work being done at the deserted village? And is that just for design and engineering, or what's the vision there, at least from your perspective as we sit right here?
Well, as I think most know, the deserted village, Feltsville, is on the historic register, and we are the stewards of taking care of that historic property. This is for exactly what you said, to provide engineering and design services to deal with six of the houses with their roofs. And they're cedar-shaped roofs, which usually have a lifetime of about 30 years. Because it's a heavily forested area, things fall on the roofs. It really cuts down their life. They were last replaced in 1992, so it's much needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioner's Board? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Director. Department of Public Safety, Director Dennis Burke.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. Department of Public Safety has six items on the agenda for your consideration. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioner's Board? Well, I just want to acknowledge number one and just the shared service agreement between the borough of Providence and our county Department of Public Safety, and having the county provide shared services. So definitely.
Thank you. We're actively onboarding them right now with our regional communication center. Looking forward to having them come on as partners.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Chairman.
Office of County Council, County Council Bruce Bergen.
Thank you, Chairman. County Council's Office has four resolutions tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Any questions from the Commissioner's Board?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Bruce, number one, I just wanted to see if there's been any communication back from the county of Somerset on our kind of discussion about getting out of that maintenance agreement?
Yes. Commissioner, the county of Somerset and Union County have communicated, they, in fact, at their meeting on Tuesday night earlier this week, passed a resolution acknowledging that they're taking over this stretch of road, naming it, giving it a county road number. So yes, they are fully on board with this.
Thank you. I know, County Manager, you were involved in this whole process too. Can you elaborate, please?
Yeah, Commissioner, to echo what Bruce said, the board has been a very collaborative effort. We've worked together. I know our engineer, Rick, was out with their engineer, Joe Polakay was there. Everybody inspected the road. It's in good condition. They've worked... We've worked well together to ensure this easy transition, so it's been great.
Yeah, I appreciate your leadership, Ed, because I used to travel that every day, going to Warren for work back in the day when I was commuting in Warren, and I always thought it peculiar that a road in Somerset County was maintained. But I know it was an old agreement, but I'm glad we're sorting it out.
It was about 80-something years old.
It's good. It's good.
Close to 100 years.
Close to 100 years, yeah. So it's something that was done a long time ago, and now it's back where it belongs.
Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, County Council.
Thank you, Chairman.
All the Commissioner's sponsored resolutions are from the entire board. Are there any comments from my colleagues regarding any of the Commissioner's sponsored Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move this chair.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.